I will call to order this regular meeting of the San Marcos City Council. It is Tuesday, February 20th of the year 2024. The time is 6:00 PM. Ms. Trevino, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Mr. Prather, Mr. Scott.
Here.
Ms. Garza, Mayor Houston.
Here.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Here.
Mr. Gleason.
Here.
And Ms. Rendosa.
Hi.
Thank you. We have a current president.
Okay. Is Mr. Latham here? Our chaplain? We will say our pledges first then. For those of you who care to, would you join me in the pledges to United States and Texas?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. Pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. All right. Citizen comment time period. And we have several. And I'm going to read these in order so that y'all can be ready, maybe lining up. In order will be Lisa Marie Capoletta, who joins us remotely, followed by, and apologies if I mispronounce your name, Curtis Pantin, John Mark Slack, Robert Rodriguez, Shaquille Barapura, and Daniel Ziel. And the city council welcome speakers at our regular meetings. To speak in person, folks must sign up online or in the city clerk's office prior to 5:45 PM. You may speak once and we, you will not yield time to others. If you speak about a public hearing topic during citizen comment, we ask that you not repeat exactly the same comments again during the public hearing on the same topic. When you state your name, you will have three minutes to speak. You'll see the timer on the screen. You'll be in green. When you have 20 seconds left, the timer shows only yellow, and when the timer is red, your time to speak is up. Mayor and council will endeavor to ensure that meetings are conducted in a courteous manner and an atmosphere free of defamation, intimidation, personal insults, profanity, or threats of violence. Is Ms. Capoletta on? All right, Ms. Capoletta, you are first today.
Hi, good evening. My name is Professor Lisa Marie Capoletta. They call me Ellen C. I would kindly ask you in the future, when y'all have discussion items, that you place on the agenda the reason why you're discussing it, any background research, including the current state of the item, any proposed changes. I believe this would give a lot of context to our community so that they're educated when these agenda items happen because they're not privy to the rationale. Additionally, it would then shift the burden from someone like me who's engaged, and it wouldn't be incumbent upon me to ascertain why that's an agenda item. I believe that a much more viable item, way for us to proceed for emergency communications versus sirens which impede situational awareness and also may be in close proximity to houses, which would also cause permanent hearing loss, would be a ham radio and GMRS radio infrastructure. After all, loud sirens impede situational awareness, and they don't give an indication what the emergency is. Additionally, from what I'm understanding from city staff, quote, "As far as public education, the current sirens have not been operational for quite some time, while so public education and outreach has not been necessary." The city is already planning to roll out additional outreach once the sirens are functional. And that's a direct result of my speeches and my email correspondence, which begs the question, why now? If we haven't had operational sirens right now, why are we now suddenly pinning the cost on good developers here in our community? In fact, these sirens are not even a state law. So if they're not a state law, and we haven't had them operational for some years, why suddenly are you strapping the cost on developers here in our community? In fact, I think those should be shifted to the burden of developers of high rises. Apparently, the cost is going to be thirty-two thousand, six hundred and thirty, oh, about thirty-three thousand to thirty-five thousand dollars for a new siren. Now, now I would like to ask the Heavenly Father to watch over our community, and Lord, we all know at the end of our life, we're all accountable to your justice. We must answer for our actions of sins omission and sins of commission. Heavenly Father, I ask that you watch over our city staff and open their minds to the Holy Spirit with a spirit of discernment and eliminate the spirit of confusion. Lord, I ask right now that you open up the souls to those who are corrupt in our community to the Holy Spirit, because after all, we all have to pay for our sins in the next life. We ask that St. Michael and all of his heavenly angels watch over the city, our city workers, our fire, our police, our EMS, and also those citizens in our community who are struggling to pay our taxes. Thank you for your time, and God bless San Marcos.
Our next speaker is Curtis Pantin. If you'll head over to the microphone. Yes, sir. We want everyone in the room at home to hear you and also for our recording for, they'll be out there for a long time.
Thanks. My name's Curtis Pantin. I own an interest in a small business insurance agency here in San Marcos. I was recently in the process, I was going to make an offer on a house in Blanco Vista, and I'm talking today about item number seventeen, the economic development package for Buc-E's. Buc-E's is going to be built right outside of Blanco Vista on the access road. This past Saturday at two o'clock, I went to, I was going, I live in, I live in New Braunfels now. I was going to HEB in New Braunfels, and I pulled off into the Buc-E's to get gasoline. It took me five minutes just to get to the pumps. They have a hundred and twenty gas pumps. They have a thousand parking spaces, and I kid you not, I drove around three times, every pump was filled. It was a zoo. Now, I love Buc-E's. I love Buc-E's. It's like, it's like Disney World of convenience stores. But, you know, I, I don't want Buc-E's, you know, outside of my subdivision. This is going to create a huge traffic issue along that access road. The access road in New Braunfels is five lanes wide. The one out here is two lanes. It's going to be a nightmare. One of the reasons I'm considering moving back to San Marcos is because it's not Austin, and I don't want the traffic issues that you have in Austin. I don't, I avoid Austin like the plague. It's terrible. So I'm concerned about that. And then, as I started reading up on this, item number two, this Chapter 380 Economic Development Plan program, Buc-E's gets a refund of fifty percent of the sales tax from the city and the county for fifteen years, which by y'all's numbers is roughly four point two million dollars, which I understand they probably will put back into the business. And that is a closely held business. It's not publicly traded. You and I can't benefit from the ownership of Buc-E's stock. But we're given four million dollars of taxpayer money back to this guy to what? Do what he's supposed to do in the first place. I have customers here in San Marcos, some friends that are building a convenience store and a car wash, and I asked them yesterday, I said, did you get any of this Chapter 380 development money? And money's not available for the small business owner, and I don't understand that. I don't think that's right. And I just wanted to express my concern that, you know, I think that the small players, business owners who spend their money and time to start businesses here in San Marcos ought to be, ought to have access to that same development money. Thank you.
Our next speaker is John Mark Slack.
How's it going, everyone? Thank y'all for your time. My name is John Mark Slack, and I live at 714 Burleson Street. I wanted to go along the same line as, if y'all do approve this, if y'all could come up with something for small business owners that would give back to us smaller businesses, because that's my biggest concern, is that these large corporations can come in here, and we're not supporting our smaller businesses. And so you brought up pretty much all the valid points. I hate to stop growth, but I think it should really be looked at closely if we can support the smaller businesses in this community and help them grow. If y'all approve this, I would hope y'all look at that situation for the smaller guys. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Robert Rodriguez.
Hello, my name's Robert. My issue is pretty much the same, they're the same line as those guys.
Would you state your name for the record?
Robert Rodriguez.
Thank you.
They call me Bobo. Anyway, they, I want the incentives too. We, and I don't, I think, I think the property there would better be served to something else instead of a Buc-E's. We need another big grocery store. I don't want to say any names, but we need another grocery store here in San Marcos other than the one we got. So I think that would be better served. And also the incentives, when I built my house, I had to pay eleven thousand dollars to put in the store line. Then I build a house down the street, and I had to pay to tap into it. There's no incentives there, and I want to build some houses too. I don't see any incentives for the small businessman. I just wish we could get some help. That's all I got to say.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Shaquille Barapura.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councilmen, for getting me the opportunity to speak to you guys. I'm a small business owner. I have two businesses in San Marcos areas.
Would you state your name for the record so it'll be correct?
Sorry.
Did I miss it? State your name.
Oh, my name is Shaquille Barapura.
Thank you.
So I'm, I've got a couple of businesses in San Marcos. I'm a small business owner. I want to emphasize what Curtis and other gentlemen brought about. It's all about small business. Small businesses are backbone of, heart and soul of the cities. We bring in probably the same number of jobs, it's just that instead of one big box, we got about ten or fifteen outlets. And it's just that it's been spread it around, and we are backbone of the city. When things goes wrong, we open our stores and we make sure our patrons and our neighbors get served with, with good services. Again, going back to the point, it's, it's like a big box coming in and asking for incentives, that's in my, in our mind, is highly unjustified in terms of, even if there's two hundred jobs, it's paying sixteen, eighteen dollars. We do the same in about fifteen, twenty outlets, that we represent other business owners. So in our, our mind, this is something not good use of incentive monies to bring in a big corporation in our society. Second point is what Curtis mentioned, traffic is going to be a nightmare. It's fairly easy, right now, we exit Chuck Nash, it's simple, but envision having a ten thousand cars go by, and that two lanes of Texas, it's going to be a nightmare compared to, it's even worse than what 306 is in New Braunfels. So I want to make sure you guys are well aware that when you make your judgment call, make sure that you think what it's going to be in three years than what it is now, because traffic is going to be a nightmare, having that type of use there in that society. The other thing I wanted to point out to the council is what value this brings in to the neighbors, like what Curtis mentioned. He wants to live next to, behind the backyard in Blanco Vista. What value would this, this gas station bring? It's a gas station in the end of the world. It's branded, it's got a big name around it, it's got good operation style, but end up, end of the day, what value would it bring to the resident living in our city? I would say it would be better to bring in a manufacturer and give them an EDC incentive if they pay higher, and maybe produce, maybe better quality jobs even. Maybe a, some sort of a grocery chain, which, because Blanco Vista don't have access to good grocery chain. Now, Whisper is going to, so something along that line would be extremely helpful in my mind. So when you consider this motion or this item, consider that in our mind, this is, there's not much value to the neighbors living in the, in the immediate vicinity. I just wanted to bring those three points to you guys. I hope you guys have a good evening. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Daniel Zell.
Hello. For the record, my name is Daniel Zell. Thank you, Mayor Houston, members of the city council and staff. I'm here on behalf of Pape Dawson. I'm speaking on agenda item number six, which is the Shady Gravel Valley and Utility Upgrades. Appreciate the, the city's faith and trust you're putting into me, and that we will be a responsible steward of the city's funds and deliver the project on time and on budget. Just as a quick introduction, I was part of the team with Lori Moyer, Ray Garcia, Greg Schwartz, and Richard Rarinos, that developed the hike and bike trail concept after the 2015 flood. So I appreciate the opportunity to continue to serve the city of San Marcos, and I look forward to delivering this project to you. Thank you.
And I believe, Ms. Trevino, that's everyone who signed up to speak.
Yes, ma'am.
For those of you who spoke on the Buc-E's item, I hope that you will remain here during our discussion. I think some of your questions will be answered. Item one.
Receive a presentation on the Dunbar and Heritage Neighborhood Area Plan and provide direction to staff.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Amanda Hernandez, Director of Planning and Development Services. We're here this evening to get direction from city council on the Dunbar and Heritage Area Plan. I'll start with the history of the plan, and the boundary that you see on the screen is where we started. This is the initial boundary that was suggested by city staff and the consultants, and our idea for this plan was to focus on that area of town just west of downtown that has a lot of mixed uses, mixed zoning, and has been seeing a lot of development pressures. The uses in this area range from single-family to multifamily, as well as small commercial businesses. The boundary was presented to the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee, and the committee recommended expanding the boundary. The recommendation was to extend to the end of San Antonio Street to encompass more of the Dunbar neighborhood, and extend north to Burleson. On the next slide, you'll see the boundary that staff redrew to more closely follow the Dunbar and Heritage Kona, Council of Neighborhood Association's Neighborhood Boundaries. In August of 2022, city council approved the area plan boundaries, including this one, and it looked like what it looks like on the screen. Next slide. Two months later, in October of 2022, we kicked off the plan process. This is a graphic representation that you have seen for the comp plan. This is specifically for the Dunbar plan to show that the consultants and staff worked with the community through the Dunbar and Heritage Neighborhood Area Plan Steering Committee to create a draft Dunbar and Heritage Neighborhood Area Plan. Next slide. We love to show photos of our outreach, so that is what the next slide is showing, some of our outreach that we held at the Dunbar Recreation Center, as well as the Price Center. And that photo up in the top corner, I have to shout out to my staff. For the neighborhood character studies, our staff walked every single street in the neighborhood to take down data on the structures that exist there. Next slide. Going back to process. In September of '23, the plan was presented to the Historic Preservation Commission and the Neighborhood Commission as an update and informational item. In October, the plan was presented to the Steering Committee, the Dunbar and Heritage Area Plan Steering Committee, who was asked to vote on the plan. Ten of our twelve Steering Committee members voted that the plan should move forward. In November, the plan was then presented to Planning and Zoning Commission at a public hearing, and after some discussion, Planning and Zoning Commission postponed action on the plan and created a subcommittee. The subcommittee met in December and formulated a recommendation for consideration by the full commission. Next slide, please. The subcommittee recommendation was discussed by Planning and Zoning Commission at their January 23rd meeting, and the commission agreed to the recommendations, which are summarized on the screen and are as follows. They wish to separate the Dunbar neighborhood from the Heritage neighborhood and redraw the boundaries for the two separate plans. The subcommittee agreed to take on the task of redrawing the new boundary. This is the main reason that we're here for this evening's presentation, because the boundary was approved by city council. We wanted you to provide direction on a potential change to that boundary. The second item on this list is if council agrees to change the boundary, and we're going to essentially kind of go back to the drawing board, P&amp;Z felt the outreach should focus on the Dunbar neighborhood, specifically those who felt they didn't have the opportunity to participate in the previous area plan outreach, those who live or have lived in the neighborhood, and those with a vested interest, such as small business owners and churchgoers as examples. Finally, Planning and Zoning Commission recognizes that the Historic Preservation Plan will be kicking off very soon, and to avoid participation fatigue, recommended that we combine our outreach efforts. We also discussed that if the plan boundary does not change, that the plan could be renamed. There was some confusion with the Dunbar Heritage Association and the Dunbar and Heritage Neighborhood Area Plan, and those names are very similar, so that was causing a little bit of confusion, but there was no official recommendation from Planning and Zoning Commission on that particular item. Next slide. At the end of the presentation, I'll seek your direction on those three points, specifically on the Dunbar and Heritage Area Plan. And the following slides are considerations that we'd like to offer for city council as you're thinking about these three topics. On item number one, which is separating the plans, the change is out of the scope that we have with the consultants, so we are essentially starting over with two separate plans. Though we have a lot of the data, it would still take some work to do that separation. So out of scope, but also we don't have additional funding for the consultants. This will be a staff-driven process if we choose to make a change at this point. And we've done that before. We've taken on long-range planning processes. We can write plans and documents, but we do have to consider and assess our staff capacity and consider how we will prioritize not only our daily tasks, but also those tasks which have been directed by city council. In considering the new boundary and where the line will be drawn, if the Planning and Zoning Commission Subcommittee redraws the boundary, would city council want to provide direction or take action to approve that new boundary? And finally, considering the Steering Committee, the current committee, which has kind of been disbanded since they took a vote on the plan, consisted of folks from both neighborhoods, and we would need to, again, separate out the members, determine which are focused on which part of the plan, and schedule more meetings. And on the next slide, considerations on point number two, focusing outreach in Dunbar will include that staff capacity to have those outreach efforts. It would be a good opportunity to be able to focus and, and further engage with that underrepresented neighborhood, but we will be relying heavily on Planning and Zoning Commission and volunteers to help us get the word out, especially for those audiences that we haven't been able to reach. The small business owners, the churchgoers that maybe don't want to come to a city function could be reached at a different location, and maybe the outreach efforts look a little bit different than they have in the past. We don't really talk much about the Heritage neighborhood if we do separate, so the question could also be whether or not we need to go back to that group of people and see if there is more outreach that is needed, or if there's more input that we need to potentially pull into that separate plan. And then finally, that combined outreach that will help ease staff workload a little bit, because we are going to be full force on the Historic Preservation Plan very, very soon. So as we are scheduling outreach in the Dunbar neighborhood and potentially the Heritage neighborhood, we can tack on this additional conversation with the area plan, so that way we can avoid, hopefully, the participation overload, but we also will have to be mindful of information overload if we're asking people to comment on two different things and being clear what we're focusing on at each station. Next slide. I'm going to go through the two-direction slides, and then I'll turn it over for city council discussion. This slide is focusing specifically on the Dunbar and Heritage Area Plan. The number one question is, does city council want to separate the plans? And do we want to let the committee draw that boundary? Does council want to see the boundary? That's kind of all part of question number one. If the answer to that is yes, then there are a couple of additional points. Do we want to focus on Dunbar? And are we okay combining the outreach? If the answer to question number one is no, then we would move on to direction item number two, which is providing direction to Planning and Zoning Commission to take action on their plan. At their meeting, they could provide recommendations, which could include potential edits to the plan, as well as offering options for the change of name. Next slide. After we get direction on the Dunbar and Heritage Area Plan specifically, we're also seeking direction on the other area plans that we have in process. There is a list there that shows where we are with each of the plans, and Planning and Zoning Commission at their meeting in November, when we talked about Dunbar and Heritage, indicated that they didn't have a desire to act on area plans until the Comprehensive Plan is adopted. This means hitting pause potentially on everything until the summer. So that's kind of number one. Do we want to hit pause and not do anything else on area plans until the comp plan is adopted? Bullet number two would, if directed, allow staff to proceed with creating the documents and even potentially getting that final vote from the Steering Committee. Since we have a couple of Steering Committees that are really engaged, I think we would recommend at a minimum this number two, so that way we don't lose the interest of that Steering Committee. They don't think that we have forgotten about them. Of course, we're keeping them updated on everything that happens with the comp plan every time we have an update on their particular plan, so they know what's going on. But we would like to continue at least drafting those plans, getting final drafts that are ready to go. And then the third option there is to continue with the adoption process as currently scheduled. More specifically, the Blanco Gardens Area Plan is ready for a vote from the Steering Committee. We have a meeting with them next week, and it would be before P&amp;Z in a month or two. You would potentially see it in May, which is about the same time that we'll be looking at the Comprehensive Plan at the council level. And then the East Village and North of Campus plans would be following shortly thereafter. We have been engaged with those Steering Committees and those parts of the community in order to start drafting those plans. So we are on track to work towards the schedule that's on the screen, but again, this is kind of that second piece of direction we're seeking, is what would you like us to do with the other area plans? And that will conclude my presentation.
Okay, council, if we, thank you. This is, would you see on the screen that they're saying direction is needed? Ms. Hernandez went through very carefully, and I think explained it very well. So my question to you is one, and then if it's yes, then we're going to look at A, and we're going to look at B. So I need your input. Do we want to separate that? And when we're talking about a subcommittee, that's a sub of what committee?
It's a subcommittee of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
So it's a committee of the planning? I, when we say subcommittee, I'm expecting there's a committee somewhere.
Yes, yes.
Like maybe the Steering Committee or somebody. So that's where I get confused. So that's the P&amp;Z group?
Yes.
That proposed that? And that was... Where is the stakeholder group on this? Or they, that was, they finished before it went to P&amp;Z, so they have not weighed in on this?
Correct. We asked for the Steering Committee to vote before we went to Planning and Zoning Commission.
Right, so that's, okay. I just wanted to make sure. Counsel, what do you think? If you're going to say something, be sure you turn your microphone on. And I'm going to ask, you can either volunteer, or I'm going to come around and ask you anyway.
I'll volunteer to go first. So I keep bringing it back here, going up in some articles, just knowing how these neighborhoods are different. Every neighborhood is very unique when it comes to just their character. We've got the Dunbar neighborhood. We've also got Historic District. We've got Barrio Pascal. We've got all these other neighborhoods throughout the city. I think it's important that we allow that neighborhood to define itself the way they prefer to, and I think it's a good idea for us to start doing some outreach and really give it a shot and see what we can get for, especially when it comes to these neighbors who don't have the chance to make it to City Hall, churchgoers, just people who live in that neighborhood. I think it's really important for us to get their input, especially something this unique that is Dunbar.
Okay. So you are yes to separate them?
Yes, ma'am.
Which was the only question on the table, but I'm going to come back to the others. Anyone else?
Yes, separate, and then option.
I'll come around for the other. Okay, so, so you're a yes. Mr. Scott, need your microphone on, please.
Yes.
Thank you. I don't see Ms. Garza on, so...
I'm a yes on separation.
Ms. Gleason's a yes, and if you'll turn your microphone on. If y'all just leave your microphones on during this discussion, it, life would be easier for all of us. Gleason, you're a yes, and Mr. Gonzalez is a yes, and I'm a yes. So the question is, after the committee, we go back to the committee and ask them about redrawing the line, but they haven't done that yet. They don't have a proposal?
Correct. We were waiting for city council direction before we sent them on that path.
Okay. So after the committee redraws, and P&amp;Z has seen it, where there may be a recommendation of, I don't know, but there'll be some kind of recommendation, do we want to see it again? Mr. Prather?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Prather's a yes to run it through here. Mr. Scott?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay.
I'm a yes.
Okay. Mr. Gleason?
Yes, ma'am.
And...
I'm a yes as well.
Okay. So it looks like that one is a yes. So because we did say yes, now is, do we want the focus on outreach to Dunbar, specifically those who wanted to participate and, and for whatever reason, did not? And we know life's busy, so no criticism that they didn't, just sometimes it doesn't happen. Focus on those who live or have lived in that neighborhood, and focus on vested interests such as those business owners there, and we know there are a number of small churches there, maybe some not so small in that area. So I'm asking if we want to, does this mean we're focusing on Dunbar and less on the Historic District? My question to you is, of the participation, is there a feeling that Dunbar is the one that didn't have as much and... and the Heritage Neighborhood had more participation? Or do we need to talk about the Heritage side, the other streets?
Sure. So from being at the meetings, when we were at the Price Center, I think we probably had more Heritage Neighborhood representation. And when we were at Dunbar, Mrs. Temidey's actually so graciously canvassed the neighborhood for us. And we had a lot of Dunbar representation at the Dunbar meeting. So we were probably close to 50-50. But when we were at Planning Commission, those who came to the podium to speak specifically said they felt like they hadn't been involved in that conversation.
Okay. I just didn't want to leave out the other folks. If they still had comments, then maybe they couldn't come either, so...
And I think we would need to, once we separate the plans, we'll take the data we have, recreate two separate plans. We're going to have to put that Heritage Plan, whatever it ends up being called, back out for public input.
Yes.
But I don't know that we would do the more pointed outreach.
Okay. But there will be opportunity to comment?
There will have to be, yes.
As we always do?
Yes.
All right. So council on 1A. I'm seeing Mr. Prather nodding his head.
Yeah, 1A.
Okay. And you're a yes. And Mr. Scott's indicating to me a yes.
I'm a yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I'm a yes as well, ma'am.
A good idea is a good idea, Ms. Hernandez. Okay. Next one is consider combining the area plan and the historic preservation plan outreach.
Mayor, do you mind if I interrupt? I had my head down, so I didn't see if Councilmember Mendoza had nodded his head. And I didn't see it. Okay, it's perfect. Thank you.
All present had indicated yes.
Perfect.
But thanks for making sure that we're clear on that. Okay, so now we're looking at combining area plan and historic preservation plan outreach. I'm not sure how you could even separate those myself. So I'll just go first and say I'm a yes. So...
Probably not a yes, ma'am.
Yes from Mr. Prather. Remember, we have people watching at home and people listening, so we need to...
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I'm a yes from Mr. Mendoza.
I'm a yes, ma'am, as well.
Yes from Mr. Gonzalez.
I'm a yes too, but I did like and I appreciated the comment from Ms. Hernandez that I think this is going to be a little confusing. I don't see how you separate them, but I think it is going to take some work to explain it a little bit. But I think putting them together is...
I think in the long run, it might be less confusing because I do think it's going to be hard to separate.
Yeah.
So... Okay. Mr. Scott?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. Mr. Scott is a yes. So we don't need to do the if-no. So we're done with this section?
Yes, so we can move on to the next slide.
Next slide. Okay. When you say all area plan processes, is that... Not the downtown, because that's done. All of these, all five that are in some stage of progression?
Yes. Number one would be, let's stop everything. Let's work on the comp plan. Step two is, keep working with the ones that you have going. Maybe we don't start the new ones. We have at least one that hasn't kicked off yet, south of downtown. And allow us to continue at least drafting the plans. So when the comp plan's approved, we can kick off that adoption process. And then number three is, you know, put some more coal in the stove. We're charging along.
So my question is, if we're going to have things kind of paused while we're still taking input on comp plan, which that ends on Friday, that'll be the deadline for incoming comments.
Yes.
Then we've got to figure some things out. So you'll be on pause for that. You'll be working on Dunbar Heritage. Is this what y'all need to do in order to focus and get daily work done? Because I... If that's what you need, I'm okay with that. But I hate to see pause. And of course, Dunbar Heritage will be continued.
If I had to choose, my preference would probably be two, knowing that Planning Commission doesn't want to approve anything before the comp plan is approved. So at least number two, because we do have a lot of engaged citizens, specifically in Blanco Gardens, north of campus, and East Village are a little harder to get together because they're, you know, different groups of people. But I think I would prefer at a minimum, number two, if we don't want to move on full steam ahead.
That's where I was going, was spend time on Dunbar Heritage. At least wrap up Blanco Gardens, like you say, it's so far down the path. But for north of campus and south of downtown, which haven't... North of campus, there's been at least one public input.
North of campus and East Village are in process, but they're at an earlier stage. We, with East Village, have a draft in hand for staff review that hasn't gone public. North of campus, we're working on the character study piece. So we don't have that draft in hand yet. We're working on the exhibits first. But East Village... Yes, East Village is one that we would like to see continue because we're at the point where we're almost ready for a draft to be published online. And if we can, again, keep the stakeholders engaged that have been engaged to this point, I think that would be more successful than postponing till the summer and potentially losing some of that participation.
Okay. So we're talking about continuing at whatever stage, Dunbar and Heritage, Blanco Gardens, East Village, and then putting the pause on north of campus and south of downtown?
North of campus is the one that we're in the character study phase, so yes.
You want to proceed? Okay. And south of downtown, which hasn't kicked off yet?
Right. I think we're going to have to push that one until we get all of these others caught up. But again, if we're doing the number-two there, it would be moving forward with everything except south of downtown until we get a draft and a vote from our Steering Committee. Then we stop. We halt the adoption process, is really what we would do. So we're not in front of committees, commissions, telling them, this is coming, we're almost done, when we're not sure when that's going to be.
Okay.
I'll go for number-two, ma'am.
As Ms. Hernandez just described it, okay. Others?
Number-two, ma'am.
Number-two as well.
Okay.
Here, I'll go for number-two as well.
Okay. Mr. Scott?
Two's fine.
Ms. Garza, you're...
I have a majority.
Okay. Well, and I'm a yes. So have we completed our assignment?
Yes, ma'am. Appreciate your time this evening.
All right. Thank you. So that concludes item one. Next is our consent agenda. And the following ordinances, resolutions, et cetera, may be acted upon by one motion. Counsel, I'm looking to see, is there anything anyone wants to pull? And I am pulling item five. Anything else? Okay. In that case, I will accept a motion. And I'm missing a page. I will accept a motion to approve two through, I think it's 14?
Minus number-five.
Minus number-five.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. I've got a motion from Mr. Gonzalez, second from Mr. Gleason, to do two through 14, accept number-five. Ms. Trevino, let's vote.
Did you want to use a machine, ma'am?
I'm sorry?
The voting? The voting machine?
Oh, we're going to use the voting buttons.
Well, I have a question because mine is yes to everything except for 14.
Yes, except 14?
It'll do it here? Oh, okay.
No, but you can just tell her.
Oh, okay. Dang, I don't get to click the button, then, okay.
Hold it.
Ms. Garza, can you select it? And then I noted that you...
Yeah.
...put note on 14. A motion passes seven is zero with Ms. Garza voting no on 14.
Okay. And as we do, the item that is pulled, we will wait on that until after our public hearing. So we will roll on to item 15. Ms. Trevino?
Receive a staff presentation, hold a public hearing to receive comments for or against resolution 2024-20R, providing support for the submission of an application for low-income housing tax credits to the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs for Riverview Apartments located at 601 River Road, approving findings related to such application, providing authorizations for execution or submission of documents related to such application, and declare an effective date and consider approval of resolution 2024-20R.
Ms. Hernandez?
Good evening, mayor and council. Amanda Hernandez, Director, Planning and Development Services. The subject property is located in the Blanco Gardens neighborhood and consists of 54 housing units. Forty of those units are permanent Section 8 units. This request is for a resolution of support for an application to the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs, TDHCA. And the applicant is seeking assistance with the renovation and rehabilitation of an existing apartment complex which has fallen into disrepair. Council may note that we typically see resolutions of no objection requests and that this is specifically a resolution of support. So I would just want to provide some context for that. Most applications that we receive are for new developments, and they're applying to the state for what's called 4% housing tax credits. The 4% housing tax credit applications are not competitive and generally seem like they're fairly easy to get. This request, before you tonight, is a request for 9% housing tax credits, which is a competitive process. Most of these tax credit awards go to the city of Austin, and we rarely get the opportunity to see these. The applicant received word that they were allowed to apply in January and immediately reached out to have this item heard before their application deadline, which is March 1st. The applicant will receive additional points on their application from the state based on a variety of things, some of those which are included in this presentation, and I will point those out. The first of which, though, is the resolution of support. And the way the language is worded in the resolution has been vetted by the applicant that it will get them those additional points that they need. Next slide. There are six structures existing on the site and no additional development or impervious cover proposed at this time. Next slide. Staff reviewed this request based on the criteria in the city's affordable housing policy. In summary, the project is not seeking tax exemption. It's supporting the adopted policy by maintaining an older development, and it's located near a bus line. The proposal is not meeting criteria that are specifically related to new developments, such as location on the comprehensive plan and the zoning district. But again, it's an existing development. It's there. Nothing's really changing except fixing the units. And really, our criteria are kind of geared towards those new developments, so it's not totally applicable. One criteria that's not met is the location close to grocery, medical, and schools. The nearest grocery is Cuevas Produce, with the next being Walgreens and Walmart. The site is not near medical or schools. And on the next slide is the final criteria, number eight, which deals with wraparound support services. Staff has provided a neutral recommendation on this item. As I mentioned, with it being an existing development and applying for those 9% tax credits, our policy doesn't exactly align with that application. It was really geared more towards those 4%. So the applicant is providing services. I've included those on the slide in the packet. And they wanted to note that they're given flexibility, that if one of those services or programs isn't working, they can go back to the laundry list that's provided by the state and pick something that will benefit their residents. Next slide. As is typical with our resolutions for low-income housing tax credit projects, the resolution includes twice the state average per capita language, which means that we have a lot of developments that are funded with this type of funding mechanism. The next two items on the slide are those that are going to give the applicant more points in that competitive application process. The first is a reduced permit fee in the amount of $500. And the second is a signature on the letter that's attached in your packet. And the letter essentially states that the city has identified this neighborhood, Blanco Gardens, as a revitalization area and that we're indicating that we are investing in that area. And we really are because we're spending a significant amount of CDBG dollars to improve this neighborhood. Next slide. We were luckily able to put this item on the Workforce Housing Council Committee meeting last week, and they recommended approval of the request. The housing policy, though, specifically states that a project must meet five-of-eight criteria to receive staff support. If you looked at our analysis, we came up with four-of-eight, with one being neutral. However, this is a unique situation. It's an existing development. It's rehabilitating these units that... This applicant's been working with code compliance and our chief building official. They need this assistance to be able to get those up to a better standard. So we are in opposition of that policy, recommending approval of this resolution. And that concludes my presentation. And I believe the applicant may be online joining us.
Okay. Then I'm going to open the public hearing. And we have some folks signed up. However, for a public hearing, you do not have to sign up in order to speak. And so I will go... Is Russell Gardner online? Okay.
Yes, I'm online. Can everybody hear me?
Yes. If you'll state your name and your address for the record, and then you've got three minutes.
Wonderful. But my name is, for the record, my name is Russell Gardner. This is regarding 601 River Road in San Marcos, Texas. This is for the, as Ms. Hernandez referenced, this is for the 54 affordable housing units. It's an existing property over near River Road. So my staff and I and consultants are including Riverview Apartments in a 9% housing tax credit application. And as part of that, as Ms. Hernandez referenced, this will certainly benefit the residents living on the site and also the surrounding area. In addition to renovating the units, we are, will be adding wraparound supportive services on the property, including K-12 after-school tutoring programs, adult and family skills classes. We'll be adding repairs to the laundry room, to the landscaping, significant repairs throughout the property. And one thing that my team and I noted in purchasing this property in 2022, as Ms. Hernandez alluded to, is property was in disrepair. It had failed two consecutive U.S. HUD inspections and really have been in need of repairs for quite some time. So as Ms. Hernandez alluded to, we've worked with city code compliance. We've worked with city building officials and also with the U.S. Housing and Urban Development Department to help renovate these, repair these units as much as we can now, but then also utilizing 9% housing tax credits in that regard. So at this time, I will open, you know, happy to answer any questions that anybody on city council or mayor may have.
Okay. Thank you. And we will finish the public hearing. And stay tuned in case we have some questions, please, sir. Is there anyone in council chambers who wishes to speak? Far against or about this project? If you would give us your name and your address, please. And then you've got three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Sarah Anderson. I'm actually the consultant for the developer on this property. I am out of Austin, so I don't know if you need my address from there?
Yes.
Or not, okay? And that would be 1305 East Sixth Street, Unit 12, Austin, Texas. So again, I'm here just in a, really in a capacity to answer any questions that you may have. There is a difference with the competitive nature of the 9% credits. Honestly, I've been doing this for 25 years, and it's been about 15 since we've seen new 9% tax credits in San Marcos. They were built in the late '90s. There were so many built that it just wasn't competitive to come back. So this is the first time I've seen this come forward. So I know it's a little bit different. I would like to reiterate that the developer did acquire this property. I couldn't tell if it was obvious that they've newly acquired it. So the fact that it's in disrepair is not because of this developer. They've come in, they acquired it about two years ago, and have spent the last two years trying to put together financing to help bring money in and make these repairs. together financing to help bring money in and make these repairs. So if you have any questions as to the nature of the resolution, why we need to have it, that's why I'm here, is to answer those questions for you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else in chambers or in the foyer who wishes to speak far against or about this item? Seeing none, Ms. Capoletta has, did sign up and she is online. Ms. Capoletta?
Oh.
Oh, okay. Well, in that case, I will close the public hearing and await a motion from our council.
Motion approved.
All right, I'll give Mr. Scott the motion and second by Mr. Gleason. Questions, comments, concerns?
I have a concern, I guess. This is for the lady that just got offered.
Okay. Ma'am? We have questions? Or maybe for the gentleman who's online? We'll let y'all tell us that.
Okay, well, the question I have is, is washers and dryers, since you're going to provide those, how many do you have for that amount of apartments?
That is a good question, and I will have to defer to the developer for that one.
Oh, okay.
Is that Mr. Gardner online?
Yes, yes. So currently on the property, we have six washers and six dryers, and the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs requires we have one washer and dryer for every ten units. So in this case, fifty-four units, you round up, so we would be required to have those six washers and six dryers, which we are currently compliant with.
Thank you. One other question, what kind of, how much is it to, to wash them clothes now? My wife went, went today and it was an arm and a leg. Are y'all going to charge the same amount or is it more of a discount for y'all's tenants?
Again, Russ, I'll, I'll have the developer answer that.
Sure, sure. Yeah, so to your point, given this, given this is an affordable property, certainly it would be at a discounted rate. I think that compared to what was previously charged, I could tell you, since our, our team has acquired the property in 2022, given the, the disrepairs on the, on the property, we have just put in new washers and new dryers, but do not plan to raise any sort of laundry prices on the property and would be open to discounts for the affordable, affordable housing residents as well.
That's all I have, I appreciate that very much, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a question, and that is, are there, are people living there now?
Yes.
Okay. My question is, with these, with the things that you're, that are going to be done, is that going to displace people?
We, well, and the developer may want to answer this, although I can say that in some cases, developers do what would be repairs in place where they would move somebody to another part of the property and do them. We do have a plan on how to, to house people as their units are being done. Russ may want to go into the relocation plan, but it is part of the budget. They are not, you know, it's either done while they're there or they are given a place to, to go.
Okay.
And they, and everything for moving them, all of those costs are covered, but Russ may want to go into more detail on the specific plan for this property.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you, Sarah, let me, let me provide a bit of context. So as a developer of a few different HUD Section Eight affordable properties, to your point, there are, there are two ways you can do it. You can have, you can move folks' belongings into, into various parts of the, into the unit, and so you do renovation in place. One thing we have noticed is the renovations typically go more smoothly if we do temporarily relocate residents to a nearby hotel. And so no one will be permanently displaced as a result of this renovation, but at least as of, as of right now, the current plan is for temporary relocation to hotels very close to the property and that including, and that's all funded by the developer, the hotel costs, the storage of items, moving, moving companies, and also we, we provide food per diem for these families for any days that they are out of the units.
Okay, good to know. And that's required by HUD, is that the deal?
The, the specific, the, the developer fund?
Well, just the people will not be displaced?
Yes, yes, that is a HUD requirement.
And, and, yeah, and, and if, I mean, if they're, they're given a place to stay, hotel for a few days, whatever, I, I don't consider that displacement, I just want to make sure people still have home.
Correct, they have right to return.
Yes.
You're not upgrading and displacing, but they'll, they'll have the right to return.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else have a question?
I have a question, and, and I live right around the corner from there, and I think currently there's not very many residents there. Aren't the majority of them sitting empty now? There's not that many that are staying there right now, is that correct?
So as of right now, of the fifty-four units, we have thirty-six residents, so there, it's about thirty percent vacant, and that's simply due to the fact that in the, over the last three to six months, we've been working with the Department of Housing and Urban Development, and, and they have not allowed us to lease up any new units until all of the repairs were completed. And so the, those minimum repairs they, that they required have since been completed. HUD, the Department of Housing and Urban Development was actually on-site today reviewing the work that's been done. So as of, as of tomorrow, we should be able to lease up the rest of those units.
All right. That's good news.
I would just like a little bit more information, excuse me, regarding the wraparound services? Is that something that y'all have been doing prior to this project application, or is this something that you're going to be infusing if you get it funded?
It's the latter. That's something that we would be adding to the amenities on-site if, if we are able to not only receive this resolution support, but receive the tax credit award.
Gotcha. Um, this is a question for staff, is this the one we were talking about that was going to be some kind of route to, like a bus route to something, or was that another one?
This was on last week's agenda and we mentioned that there is a bus stop on Conway that's just a couple blocks away, which gave them a, a kind of partial point, but not a full point.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha, okay. I mean, it sounds good. I just always worry with things like this where folks like promise these type of services, and then I read kind of like a little, a little asterisk that says if people don't participate, like we reserve the right to, like, change it up. Having lived in the Blanco Gardens area for a while and just spending some time there, volunteering at the cat store, these type of support services are really needed, especially for the youth. So, yeah, I just want to reiterate, just making sure that you guys try your best to implement them, and obviously I understand the need to pivot if something's just like not hitting, if it's just like not the right fit for the community, but.
And their requirement, they'll have to enter into an agreement with the state?
Oh, cool, cool.
In order to provide a certain number of services, so if they swap something, they have to swap it for, like for like, you know, from the, from the laundry list that we have seen in the past.
Excellent, okay, awesome. Thanks so much for the clarification.
And the state would be responsible for approving those or disproving?
Yep.
That addresses my next concern, okay.
Thank you.
Let's vote. Ms. Trevino? Let's see, our things are blinking, I love the push-button voting.
Trying to say aye.
All right. All right, counsel, usually we would go back to the pulled item at this point, but I'm going to suggest that we continue on with at least a couple of items on our agenda, if that's okay. All right. So we will move on to item sixteen.
Consider approval of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero nine on the first of two readings, omitting the city's twenty twenty-three dash twenty twenty-four fiscal year budget to adjust expenditure accounts in special revenue funds, including procedural provisions and provide an effective date.
Motion approved.
Wait, are you here for questions or do you have presentation?
Second.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Gleason, seconded by Mr. Scott. Do y'all have any questions? Because clearly Mr. Logg's ready to answer. Anyone? I think we're good, thank you so much. Ms. Trevino, we're ready, push button?
Yes.
All right.
Okay, motion passes seven to zero.
All right, let's move on to item seventeen, please.
Consider approval of resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-one R on the first of two readings, approving a Chapter Three eighty Economic Development set of agreement with Bucce's San Marcos LLC that provides incentives in the form of refunds of fifty percent of sales tax generated by the company over fifteen years for the construction of a new Bucce's Travel Center along IH thirty-five south of Yarrenton Road and grants variance to the high-end area requirements of one pole sign authorized by the city manager or her designated to execute said agreement and declare an effective date.
Motion approved. Second.
All right, motion for Mr. Scott, seconded by Mr. Gleason. Presentation?
Good evening, Mayor and counsel, Christian Smith, Economic and Business Development Manager for the city of San Marcos. Today, city staff is requesting consideration of approval of a Chapter Three eighty agreement with Bucce's. The company is looking at constructing an approximately seventy-four thousand square foot family travel center with one hundred and twenty fueling positions with the capacity for electric, electric vehicle charging. The site will be located, the project is located on a approximately twenty-two acre site fronting southbound IH thirty-five with a productive, with a capital investment of fifty million dollars and the creation of one hundred and seventy-five full-time jobs with an average annual wage just over forty-three thousand dollars a year. Just to put that into quick context, if you take the number of full-time jobs with those salaries, that's an average annual injection of seven million dollars in payroll into the local economy annually as a result of this project. Next slide, please. Here's just a map showing that, that project location, as you can see, there's the site fronting the southbound side of IH thirty-five south of Yarrenton Road. Next slide. Here is a, a copy of their site plan, as you can see, again, fronting that southbound side of IH thirty-five with a one hundred and twenty fueling positions on the front with the family travel center in the center with parking on either side. Next slide. An environmental analysis of the site, it's not located within any Edwards Aquifer Zone or water quality zone, and the site is outside of the five-hundred-year floodplain. One quick note is that since the project was submitted with the packet, there have been a couple of corrections with regards to language about the oil-water separators, and you'll see those corrections in red throughout this presentation, and so that's, that's been, that's since been corrected. The company will be installing one or more oil-water separators to receive runoff from the fueling area on this project. Next slide. This map shows an overlay of where the site sits with existing and proposed roadways. As you can see, the IH thirty-five southbound exit is north of the site, allowing access from the site from that direction as well as access from the site back onto the highway to the, to the south. Next slide. This map shows the site's location to existing and future fire stations. That star on the top of the map shows where the site's located, and the icon on the bottom of the map is Fire Station Number Five, and the fire hydrant icons show future fire stations, both on the FM one-ten loop and at the airport. Next slide. Some notes on the sustainability of this project, in terms of stormwater quality, stormwater collection is designed to direct stormwater runoff from customer fueling and bulk delivery areas into one system and then flowing into one or more oil-water separators on the site. In terms of water conservation, the company will be installing rain sensor irrigation systems, and, and one thing that's, that's really unique about this for this project is Bucce's is looking at installing a rainwater harvesting system, which would be a first for the company and would be debuting at the San Marcos location. They're also looking at installing high-efficiency water fixtures and lighting fixtures throughout the, throughout the site. Next slide. For energy conservation, the site will have integrated timed lighting controls and all exterior light fixtures are fully shielded, full cutoff, one hundred percent downward directional and mounted as low as is practical. It's also important to note that sixty-five percent of the total lumen output is situated under fuel canopies, in other words, where people, where individuals are actually fueling. For electric vehicle charging, the, the plan is to accommodate EV charging stations along the perimeter parking, and you see the other locations that the, that the company has, and so with that perimeter EV capacity, it could hold about a hundred to a hundred and seventy-five spaces with the availability to install as is dictated by consumer demand. And so as, as demand increases over time for electric vehicles, there's a capacity on the site to adjust and accommodate that demand as, as that demand dictates. Next slide. The proposed job to the project, the company is planning to create two hundred to two hundred and twenty-five full-time jobs. That one hundred and seventy-five is a, is the minimum number of jobs that the company needs to operate its store, and they derive that from their experience throughout COVID, where what's, what's the minimum number of jobs to keep the store operational, and we have that built into, to this proposal. The typical starting wage is eighteen dollars an hour with benefits, and just to expand on what those benefits entail, employees have employer-sponsored health insurance starting after a sixty-day period, a four-one K with a one hundred percent match up to six percent, three weeks of paid time off per year that can either roll over or be cashed out, and additional two percent, excuse me, an additional two dollars an hour for overnight shifts. Next slide. The proposed terms of this agreement are the company would have to make a fifty-million-dollar capital investment, the creation of one hundred and seventy-five full-time jobs with benefits. Very importantly, there is no rebate of property taxes contemplated in this agreement, so that would result in one hundred percent property tax captured by the city, county, and school district. Fifty percent sales tax rebate for this project over fifteen years, and that's assuming county participation, fifty percent city, fifty percent county for the length of the agreement, as well as a modification of sign standards to allow for a sixty-eight-foot pole sign with sign face area up to three hundred and sixty square feet, prominently featuring San Marcos's name. The company would donate a hundred thousand dollars to a city community fund, as well as the installation of rainwater harvesting, oil-water separators, and adhering to those lighting standards I mentioned before, as well as making a concerted effort to hire local residents, contractors, and suppliers. Next slide. The potential revenue to the city, so there's two tables here, the top one shows property tax collections over that fifteen-year agreement length. As you can see, there's a zero dollar rebate over the length of the agreement, so the city will be capturing five point nine million dollars in property tax collections over that fifteen-year period. The bottom table shows what that fifty percent sales tax rebate looks like, so over the length of the agreement, the city would be rebating three points, approximately three point two million dollars of projected sales taxes and retaining three point two million dollars in, in those sales taxes. Next slide. This is just a summary table that shows that potential revenue to the city, county, and ISD, and so you have the three point two million dollar rebate for the fifty percent sales taxes on the city side, approximately one million sales tax rebate for county participation, obviously none on the, on the school district side, while the city would retain three point two million dollars in sales taxes, the county would retain a million dollars in sales taxes, and total property tax collections over the length of that agreement for the city would be just shy of six million dollars, two point eight million for the county, and eleven point four for the, for the school district. Just to tally that up, that would equate to over twenty-four million dollars in combined cumulative tax receipts to all taxing jurisdictions over the length of this agreement. And just to look at the, the return on the city's incentive over fifteen years, you take the gain of the investment from the development minus the cost of that investment and then divide that by the, by the cost of the investment, so that's twelve point three million dollars in new property and sales taxes, rebated three point two million, that's a two point eight four, two hundred and eighty-four percent return on investment for the city's incentive. Looking at the fifteen-year taxes collected to the county, three point eight, that's net of the sales tax rebate, and fifteen-year taxes collected to Hays C I S D is eleven point four million. Next slide. EDSM recommended on a seven to zero vote in December to recommend this project and the incentive to the city council at the level of fifty percent sales tax rebate for ten years, assuming Hayes County matched with the city incentive for that same term. After additional benchmarking with other municipal Chapter Three eighty agreements, that term was reset to fifteen years. Next slide. Staff recommends council approve of Chapter Three eighty Economic Development incentive agreement as presented on the next slide on first reading, and next steps would be city council consideration on second reading. Next slide, please. And that's my presentation.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, do we have questions, concerns, answers?
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to address one while folks are thinking. On the advertising locally, we used to put that in our Three eighty agreements until we got it into the policy, and I forgot that we had put it in the policy. So they're still going to be required to do that, which is advertise at the university and whatever they call their job search now, and advertise locally. That was in lieu of saying you have to hire X people locally because we know that doesn't always work out and addresses are not always accurate. So that explains why I couldn't find it, it's in the policy, and so they still have to do that.
Correct, and, yes.
Right. Thank you, well, yeah. But that's why it's good that it's in the policy, so we don't have to remember to do it each time. Mr. Mendoza?
Yes, ma'am, thank you, Mayor. Mr. Smith, thank you very much for the presentation, but thank you for the EDSM group that, that took care of this as well, I appreciate everybody's input. But I had a question about, well, since we see the new information, but I guess I will first, Bucce's, who would they be using as far as their, their trash? Do they have a separate company, or how does that work, or is it a fall in line with who we use for the city?
Commercial does their own.
Their own stuff. Would we be able to have some kind of influences to their recycling? I know they're going to be getting a lot of cardboard boxes, I haven't seen anything about recycling for them, do we have any kind of?
We could ask them what their policy is on recycling and what their procedures are.
Thank you, I would just like to make sure we just notate something like that.
Is there someone in the audience who could come to the microphone and speak to recycling efforts? Because, yeah, I bet there are a lot of cardboard boxes coming in.
There's a few. My name is Stan Beard, I'm Director of Development and Real Estate for Bucce's. Address three twenty-seven FM two thousand four, Lake Jackson, Texas. And I'm here to answer any questions. That question is, we are, we are aggressive about our boxing up of boxing, so our recycling program is about as efficient as we can get. I can, I'm not going to sit here and tell you that I know it, other than we try to be as highly efficient with our waste disposal, with our water use, with our, all of, all of our resources, we try to be as, as highly efficient as we can be, and one of those is obviously recycling of cardboard boxes, the, the pallets, the, I mean, you name it, we're, if, if it has somewhere, if it has a reuse, it's going to go there.
Thank you, that was pretty much what I had right now, Mayor.
Okay, and we'll, we'll need to introduce you to Green Guy Recycling, that's just not too far from you.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. My question is, I saw what full-time employees are going to get. What is part-time employees, and what do you consider a part-time employee per hour?
So, we tend to not focus on part-time employees, especially when we're talking about our benefits to the community, because we pride ourselves on having full-time employees. They're the reason that we're so successful. So, we, our managers, our whole philosophy is to maximize the full-time employees that we have, so whether that's 175, it's actually, we've learned, the pandemic is 170 is kind of the minimum that runs a Buc-Ee's. But this store, as everyone has mentioned, is going to be pretty busy, and so we expect more than 200 folks. Those are full-time employees. We concentrate on full-time employees. Holidays, you know, weekends, sure, we have some part-time staff, but they are usually, you know, kind of already in the queue, ready to go, but like I say, we're focused and we pay attention to keeping our full-time staff full-time.
Another question is, your customer base, are there more travelers going through San Marcos, or is it more citizens in San Marcos going to your stores?
Oh, it's undoubtedly travelers from elsewhere.
Yeah.
80% of our folks come from outside of San Marcos, outside of Hayes County, 100 miles away, 150 miles away. I mean, as we know, our focus is on the road trip stop, and so we've kind of become a destination. It's as much of a stopping point, a unique place to stop in a city as, you know, a museum or a park, really, and so we are, you know, our folks come from many, many miles away.
Okay. Then, the way I'm understanding you is, it's not really going to impact our local little stations in San Marcos?
Yeah, we're a different model. You know, we're not the corner convenience store. I mean, if I want a can of Copenhagen and a Diet Coke, I'm not going to go to Buc-Ee's.
Well, I think I knew the answer. I just wanted the public to hear that answer as well.
Sure.
For now, that's all I have. I have a couple of questions for staff, and they're there. You're ready?
I have a couple of questions there.
Yes, sir. Traffic impact, what kind of traffic impact is this going to have in that area?
I believe we have our Assistant Director of Engineering, Richard Reynosa, available to address traffic.
Okay.
And he's right behind you.
Good evening, Richard Reynosa, Assistant Director of Engineering. We have reviewed a traffic impact analysis that has been provided to the city and to Texas. We're comfortable with those numbers. The site's location is pretty optimal because you can get to the site without going through an intersection or a traffic signal. You can exit southbound 35 to the site, you can get back on southbound 35 without going through the Yarrenton intersection. There will be an access back to Yarrenton from the site, but we don't see that being, you know, the primary route to and from the site's location, although I don't know that it's anticipated for this to be a destination northbound necessarily, because you have the New Braunfels location, but even northbound, you can get to the site without going through the signal. You can, at Yarrenton, there's a U-turn without the signal, and then you can go southbound and take a U-turn that gets you going northbound back up 35. So, the site's location is pretty optimal for on and off access of 35.
Yeah, it's just someone brought up the fact that most places have four lanes, and this one only had two lanes. I just wanted some clarity on that.
And their impact analysis does show widening for their entrances for the site, so there is acceleration, deceleration lanes for their access points to the site, so there will be some widening in locations to provide additional capacity.
Okay, well, thank you.
Well, and in New Braunfels, there's one heck of a shopping center that people are taking that same exit and going down the same frontage road, and here, that doesn't, we don't have that.
Thank you, Richard.
So that's huge. Mr. Scott, and then I'm going to ask Mr. Smith some questions about our local programs.
Yeah, thanks for the question about transportation. That was one of them, making sure we had enough room, because that is, you know, two lanes, and if people do fly off that, people do come in from Yarrenton, from the neighborhood. One of the questions that I had, and I don't know if this is vicious rumor or not, is do the people that are hired at Buc-Ee's, are they hired to do a background credit check before they get hired? I'm like, do they have to have good credit to be hired, you know?
Stan might be able to address that.
I'm not aware of that. That might be one of those rumors that I can look into.
I heard it from somebody that worked in another store, and I was like...
Yeah, there's a few of those.
It seemed kind of odd, yeah.
Yeah, there's a few of those rolling around.
Right. But my other question was, why was 10 years not good enough as far as the incentive?
Good question. I'll give it a shot. So, when I first met with the mayor and these folks, Christian's been great, by the way. Everybody here, the whole staff, has been great. I appreciate that, and you all should be proud of the work they do. I made it very clear that we wanted to be here, and that we wanted to pursue a typical Texas 380 agreement that Buc-Ee's has used for the last 10 years. And so what that amounted to was, and we showed the data, that a typical is anywhere from 15 to 20 years in length, and as you get a shorter length of time for the term, we get a larger share of the tax revenue. So, it's a good example, is Hillsborough, we have a 10-year agreement that rebates a penny and a half for the 10 years. We have in Amarillo, a 20-year agreement that rebates half of their penny and a half for 20 years. And then, so this agreement is a 15-year agreement that shares half of your penny and a half. So it falls right in the middle, is kind of what I'm saying.
Yeah, yeah. I was just kind of wondering the reasoning behind it. Thank you.
Turn on the microphone.
Let's say that you didn't get a 360 agreement, would you still put your gas station here or the Buc-Ee's?
So, whenever we approach a community, the understanding is that we believe we bring a valuable asset to a community. So, yeah, it plays a huge part in where we choose to go and when we choose to go there. So, the short answer to your question...
That I ask.
Right.
Yeah.
Is we would not be having this conversation.
Yeah, thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Just verifying, it's my understanding, they have not bought the property yet.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Prather?
Well, no questions but comments. This is a great project. I was very excited to hear this. I hope this sends a message that San Marcos is open to investment, and we would love to have your business come move here. So, Buc-Ee's, thank you for choosing San Marcos for y'all's next location. I know you all be a great corporate citizen in our community, and hopefully, this also sends a message to other businesses that are looking to expand or add new stores, especially grocery stores, HEB, if you're listening, that would be willing to work with you and incentivize something like that, so that's all I have to say.
Mayor, I got a couple of comments, too.
Okay.
I, too, would like to reiterate, thank you for being here. Thank you for taking an interest in our community. I spent a lot of time traveling through Texas, and I spent a lot of time pulling in and out of Buc-Ee's, and I think this is a fantastic location, and mainly for the entrance and exits off the interstate. When you travel as much as a lot of people do, I will drive 50 miles to the next convenient stop if I have to get off, cross a highway, go through lights. So the location makes perfect sense to me. It's not going in an environmentally sensitive area, and I'm really looking forward. I hope this passes. I, too, personally have some qualms with a 15-year agreement. I would not be supporting it if it was property taxes, I'll just straight up say it. Sales tax is a different animal. We will immediately see sales tax coming in from this, property taxes, and all of the money coming back to the community from the jobs that this is going to provide. This is a huge win for us. I take it as a win, and I'm hoping this does pass, and I hope this does send a message out to that we are open for business. We do have some land on I-35, it's accessible, HEB, that we're in desperate need of it, and we're looking for this. And so, I'm excited about this. This is the kind of thing that really kind of puts you on a map a little bit, and as far as the New Braunfels thing, that intersection is a nightmare. They've got a hospital, they've got real, they've got property, you know, a personal property, and everything else that goes on over there, so this intersection's going to be very different. I probably wouldn't even use the Yarrenton exit in and out. So, I hope this passes, and I'll say welcome to the community if it does, and I'm looking forward to see what this brings.
Okay.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Could you tell me a little bit about the benefits that y'all provide for your workers? As you say, like, full-time with benefits?
Sure. So, can you maybe get me back to that slide?
Sure. Let me see what slide number that is. Can we go back to slide 10, please?
Mm-hmm.
So, while we're getting back there, the benefits are three weeks paid time off. Roll it, cash it, use it, and that is, that is a first-time initial hire, is after a year, you have three weeks paid time off. 401K participation, up to 100%, match up to 6%. The health benefits are typical, there are various levels that you can choose, but they're, you know, kind of a typical health benefit package that is available after the first 60 days. We require, our insured partners require that kind of a delay, because as we all know, we're kind of in a volatile hiring world, and we just need to be able to know that, you know, folks are going to be sticking around.
Wait, I'm sorry, what was the amount of the delay?
60 days.
60 days, okay. Gotcha, gotcha, yeah.
Which a lot do, and sometimes it's 90, so...
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
Thank you. I think for me, I saw like a bunch of like mixed commentary, especially like in the Facebook groups, but I think it was a lot of like misconceptions, like I don't think that they checked out the packet and all of the little details. So I'm going to be supportive of this. I think the one thing that my constituents have brought up to me is, you know, if they're going to treat their workers right, and from what I can see, y'all do, so, yeah, coolio. Thanks.
Thank you.
I just have one more comment, too, and this is to whoever is involved in your marketing advertising. Whoever put that billboard hanging over by the door of what you pay employees and what the benefits are, and the placards out front, how many times I see that posted on social media, where just, I can't believe they're doing this? And it makes you want to spend more money.
It really does.
It's inviting going in.
Yes, it does.
But what a great way to promote your company of, this is what we're doing, this is what we're paying, and I think it's fantastic, and it just is, I think it brings awareness to what all the potential benefits are of this not being a traditional, you know, truck stop kind of situation. So, kudos to you guys for putting that out there, because it does pop up on social media, people who have no idea.
And I appreciate you saying that, and I do want to say again that the reason we pay so well is because we know that that is where our success comes from, and so our owners have always paid over market for the past 40 years. They have always known that they need to pay our employees well in order to keep and retain the best ones, and, you know, we're proud of that, and in this world, we have to show that, you know, it's worth coming. We're not easy to work for. I mean, it's not an easy job. I have to do it a couple of times a year selling beef jerky, and it's tough, but we're proud of our wages, we're proud of our history. We have a couple, you know, stories of, well, more than a couple, but general managers of our stores who were seven, eight years ago cleaning bathrooms in our stores, and now they're running their own store. It's a big deal, and if you choose, you can be a Buc-Ee's believer for life, that's for sure.
And I wasn't meaning it as a gimmick either. I really was giving you kudos, because it's, not only is it marketing, it is really, look at us, this is what we're trying to do, and it's a great recruitment tool, too, so kudos to you guys for that.
Mayor, I just have one more thing to point out, just in case...
And I've still got a couple of things, but...
I know, I'm sorry. Just Mr. Gleason brought up, just to let the public know, I mean, of course, we've all been to Buc-Ee's, so we all kind of have an idea, but is this in any way going to be a truck stop? What we traditionally believe is be a truck stop with 18-wheelers, the whole nine yards.
It is not. The only 18-wheelers on the site will be delivering fuel or supplies to the business.
Thank you very much.
And that's consistent with Buc-Ee's. I need to make an amendment. There were some small changes in the one that you focused on, so, Mr. Vino, I make a motion to amend the agreement as shown in our updated packet to items 2.1, 3.5E through J, 7.3, 7.5, and 8.13, and I would appreciate a second from council.
Second.
I'll give Mr. Scott the second on that, and if I missed any, we'll catch it on the second reading. Y'all ready to vote on this one? Okay. Mr. Vino, are we ready to push a button?
Yes.
All right, thank you. And so, to address some of the concerns and questions, and there's always questions, what they're being paid is they're getting back some of the sales tax that they are generating. And the slide that we had that shows that we're getting the property tax, all of that, that goes to the county, that goes to us, and to the Hayes School District, because they're right inside that line. And so, there's not money that's my property tax money that's going there, it's part of their sales tax that they're getting back, that we've offered in order for them to locate in our community and to bring these jobs, and there's a, there at the end of the 15 years, that's the net to us expected based on Buc-Ee's success and other places. We do have programs for local businesses. Mr. Gary, can Mr. Smith mention those during this conversation, or can we just refer folks to a webpage so they can see them?
If it's addressing a concern that's affecting your decision-making, I think it's relevant.
Okay, thank you. We do have several programs available for local small businesses. If you could just kind of quickly describe them?
And Mayor, Joe Pantone, Assistant City Manager.
Yes, sir.
Before Christian does that, let me just preface...
Oh, go ahead.
You know, this council in 2022 asked for city staff to overhaul our economic development policy...
They did.
...to incorporate a lot of targeted programs for small and local businesses, and we have done that. At the time, our economic and business development manager started to implement those, then we had that position vacant for a while, and thank goodness now we have Christian Smith on board who is standing up those programs, so he's done an excellent job, and just wanted to recount that history. He wasn't here, but I just, I really wanted to reinforce the fact that we have overhauled our economic development policy in 2022, less than two years ago, to target that, and a lot of the programs that Christian's going to talk about are embedded in that policy.
Thank you. Not at this point in time, but if you'll let Mr. Smith go through the list, and then we're going to take a break after this, and I'd be happy to, we'd be happy to chat with you during the break to answer questions. Yes, sir?
Absolutely. So, for small business programs that are currently existing, one of the... So for small business programs that are, that are currently existing, one of the ones are the Minority Business Stabilization Fund. That's a, that's an American Rescue Plan-funded direct assistance program for small local businesses in the city of San Marcos that's based off of the size of full-time employment. Between 1 and 25 full-time employees can receive from, you know, up to $1,000 to $10,000 based off of the size of the business. The, we also have a contract with BCL Business and Community Lenders of Texas. They provide free one-on-one business assisting and coaching and, and financial classes. Some of them offered here at the library. They also have access to low or zero interest capital for smaller businesses and entrepreneurs who are seeking non-traditional sources of capital to expand and grow their business. The next few I'm going to list are council-approved small business assistance programs that are embedded in our economic development policy that staff is working to implement. The first would be our, our legacy business program, looking to honor businesses in the city of San Marcos that have been here for over 20 years. Additionally, we have a small, a sustainable resource grant that's used to incentivize the development of ecologically friendly, environmentally friendly projects for small businesses here in San Marcos. We also have a small business retention incentive, which is a jobs-based forgivable loan program for businesses who are looking to retain employees that they would otherwise lose or be forced to relocate to another community, and we would strongly prefer to, to keep them here. We also have the facade improvement grant program, which provides matching grants for exterior improvements to businesses located within, within that particular district, mostly downtown and some other surrounding areas outside, including the I-35 corridor. I will say that we do have flyers available here in the lobby for the Minority Business Stabilization Fund program, as well as some details on our partnership with BCL and how to get in contact with them.
And to find these on our web, it's samarcustx.gov. Go to Departments, Economic Development, and there's the information and the applications. And I believe there's, they all still have funds in them available? All right. Thank you, thank you.
And Mayor, I'm going to offer Christian Smith being available in the lobby after the side him to discuss that.
All right.
Thank you, Christian.
That would be good, thank you.
And, and before we move on, I know council, I just really wanted, y'all are going to get on to the vote, but I do want to say just a big thank you to Christian for working through this process. This is the first one he's done for us as the city of San Marcos, and also to GS&amp;P. I know that they've been helpful, too, in working with us. So Mr. Cameron Landers here, as well as Mr. Joe Pantalein. So just definitely want to thank everybody for their efforts to bring this forward. And Mayor Houston, I know you've been a great resource for, for them as well, but just want to take this opportunity to say thank you very, very much, and look forward to, to seeing where this goes.
Yeah. My summary is, I am really excited about this, have been since I heard it was a possibility. I, I think the location is fabulous. It's not in an environmentally sensitive area. The jobs are going to be wonderful for our community. You're paying all of your property tax, you're asking for a share of the sales tax back, and yes, thank you to staff, to Mr. Smith, EDIASM Board, and also the Greater San Marcos Partnership, everyone who has worked on this to bring us to this point. And I think it's now time to vote. Okay. So at this point, we usually take a break every 90 minutes. We've been here 94 minutes, so we will take a break according to that clock at 7:34, so let's be back at 7:45, please. So we'll last, and turn from our recess at 7:48, and we are at item five, which is the one that was pulled from the consent agenda. Ms. Trevino.
Consider approval of ordinance 2024-08 on the second of two readings, amending chapter 58, public facilities, parks, and recreation of the San Marcos City Code to add restrictions on certain beverage containers and coolers in San Marcos River within designated park areas adjacent to the river, providing penalties for violation of such restrictions, providing savings clause, providing for the repeal of any conflicting provisions, and providing effective date.
Motion to approve.
I will give that one to Mr. Gleason, and second to Mr. Scott. I'm going to jump out of the gate here and say I have a small amendment, and it is on section 58.073 about the coolers, and A, and it is to strike the word "anyone" and insert "any one person." And I would appreciate a second.
Second.
Thank you. And this is just to make it clear that it is per person for the coolers. Otherwise, I'd be going, okay, anyone, whatever. So I think it's going to be more clear. Are there any questions on that amendment? Ms. Trevino, let's vote on that one.
I don't have a question, just have a comment. I'm voting no, just because this is the only time I get to say I think this cooler thing is stupid, but I agree with everything else.
Okay.
But I appreciate your, I, I understand the, the intent to clarify that.
Right. Yeah. Can you vote?
Yes, ma'am.
And that's what a no vote looks like. No, it does work.
Oh, wait.
Okay.
Okay, it does work. It's rigged. Just kidding. Alert the media.
Yes. All right. Anything else? Anyone? Comments, thoughts?
I got, I got a couple comments.
You go right ahead.
First off, I'd like to thank staff. I know this is an additional burden, additional task, and I know this has taken a long time to get here, this case. Kudos to you and your staff, and thank you so much for embracing it. And I'm, I am super excited about this. And I want to also thank the public for participating on input on this. I heard a fair amount of feedback from both sides of this, and everybody seems to be embracing this. And I think this is one of the best votes I'll ever get to make. When I first came to Texas 25 years ago, my mother-in-law lived with a Kamauan and Guadalupe meat. My first ever experience was Memorial Day weekend, and I picked up five canoes full of cans. And I said, what is this? It blew me away that they just allowed it to happen. And I thought, you know, somebody needs to do something about that. And the fact that I get to now participate in that here in our community 25 years later is super exciting to me. So kudos to the community. I know this is step one, and I know some people were potentially wanted to look at some changes, and we can do those in the future. And, you know, so congratulations to everyone getting this done, to my colleagues, thank you very much for supporting it, and we should all be very proud of this. This is a step in the right direction of, as Mr. Prather always says, of leaving a better, brighter, and, and cleaner environment for everyone, right? So kudos to everyone, and, you know, as things come up that need to be changed, I will be open-minded. I hope future colleagues and council members in the community is, too. There's probably going to need to be some changes, and it's going to be in flux a little bit, but I'm, I'm hoping everyone embraces it, and I hope this does a lot of good for the river. So I'm super excited to make this yes vote.
I too am excited and want to thank everyone for the work that they've done and the work they're going to be doing to implement this, so thank you. And...
Yeah, why not?
It's not 8 o'clock yet.
It's not. I was, I'm very proud to have been the second one on this particular, right behind Mr. Gleason in promoting this, this ordinance here. Growing up in San Marcos, especially, you know, living in Rio Vista neighborhood, I have just seen the abuse that has been happening to our lifeline here in San Marcos. So I am very proud of staff. I am very lucky to be part of this council right now, or just part of the organization that is the city of San Marcos for this happening. So thank you to staff. Like Mr. Gleason said, thank you to my colleagues, but just, I'm very proud to know this is going to be, I don't want to use the word legacy, but we will all remember that we were able to make this, this change, so thank you very much.
February 20th, 2024.
Yep. I know, we're almost done here, right?
This is... Okay, yeah, this is it. We're nailing it tonight, so.
I have a comment. It's not as cheerful, just kidding, as it is. I really appreciate all the hard work, for sure. This is really cool, something I think we've been playing around with for a while. I am trust-falling into staff and our police department and our city marshals that we are going to focus on education, and that this is not going to turn into something where we are over policing our community. And I know a lot of folks who have those concerns also share a love for our environment, and so I will reframe the situation and think of it as an opportunity to foster a sense of understanding, where we can talk about how we can agree on one thing and use it to kind of pave the way for more productive community, city engagement. And I trust that all the education pieces are going to look cute, because Lauren Surley's on the case. So thanks, I think this is going to be good.
Let's vote. Your voting button awaits you.
Oh, wow. It's great. The motion passes seven to zero.
And it's so fast.
And thank, thanks to staff again for, for all the hard work. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for everything, and it's a collaborative effort, and especially coming to a scenario because, you know, we, we did hear, hear council say, hey, we want to make sure that it still provides family-friendly entertainment for people who like to use that, to use the part, so the no-go, the no zones and the go zones was something that we were trying to really make sure we emphasized, so just wanted to say a big thank you to everybody.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Trevino, I think we're now caught up, and we're on item 18.
Yes.
All right.
Consider approval of resolution 2024-2022R authorizing proceedings with issuance of certificates of obligation and further directing the publication of notice of intention to issue City of San Marcos, Texas combination tax and revenue certificates of obligation for certain projects for improving, constructing, equipping, acquiring, or designing the city's water and wastewater system, including technology improvements, streets, sidewalks, public safety facilities, including fire station improvements, stormwater management for flood control and drainage, electric utility system, and the payment of professional services in connection therewith, including fiscal and engineering fees, and the cost of issuing the certificates of obligation related thereto in amount not to exceed $31,100,000.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Scott, seconded by Mr. Gleason. Questions only?
I have some background information to provide council.
Lot of presentation, though.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. John Locke, Finance Director. The fiscal year 24 capital improvement program was approved as part of the fiscal year 24 budget adoption. City Council received an overview of the projects that will be included in the fiscal year 24 capital program at the February 6 workshop, and there are a total of 18 projects that are proposed to be funded with certificates of obligation. And as the reading says, it's an amount not to exceed $31.1 million. These projects expand the general fund, electric, water, wastewater, and stormwater funds. The first step is in issuing the certificates is city council considering this resolution, which directs the publication of the notice to intent, of intent to issue. The next and final action for city council would be considering the ordinance, and that is, that is scheduled for April 16th, and that's the ordinance that authorizes the certificates to be issued. Here with me this evening is our financial advisor, Dan Wegmiller, and our bond council representative, Angela Avila. They're also here to help answer questions that council may have. I'll be happy to address any questions.
I do have a question that occurred to me today, and that is, since that first year is part of the budget, it didn't used to be, it used to be separate, do we need to change the budget? Because there are certain things, and, and we've been through all that, some things get pushed, something, and that's fine, I'm not complaining about that, but that now makes what's in the budget inaccurate. So do we need to change that?
When, during the budget process, the, the 10-year CIP plan that is proposed to council that first year of the fiscal year 24 is approved, so that amount is already included in the budget.
Okay, but I'm talking about the projects, because we've, some of the projects have changed.
Oh, they, they have not went any higher than what the overall total for the, the budget was.
But the list of projects is, is somewhat different.
Yes, ma'am.
So do we need to amend the budget to match what we're actually doing the COs for? We haven't typically. No, we haven't. And this is the first time that it's occurred to me, and if we don't need to, or don't need to legally or financially, that's okay, it just occurred to me, or I wondered if it was part of the motions before, and I just missed it, but, okay. Well, if we don't need to, then, okay.
And, and the, the project that were...
Good question.
Yeah, the projects that were proposed that, that Sean Condor went over with council February 6th, those are the projects that are included in this.
I understand. My point is it's different from what we approved in the budget.
Originally approved.
Yeah, okay. Well, if we're, if we're good, and the attorney's not jumping up and down going, wait, no, stop. I'm good with it, okay. Any other questions? Well, we're going to push one of those little blinking lights.
Okay. Motion passes seven to zero.
All right. So, item 19.
Consider approval of resolution 2024-23R approving the purchase of a transformer for the Hilltop Substation operated by the San Marcos Electric Utility from the lowest responsible bidder of Texas Electric Cooperatives in the amount of $1,645,556, authorizing city manager or designate to execute all appropriate documents to complete the purchase and declare an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
And Mayor, we do not have a staff presentation on this one either.
Okay, and we're ready to roll on this one? Okay. Questions?
There's one expensive transformer. That's all I got.
I have a feeling it's probably pretty, pretty large, yeah. When I, when I first start reading transfer, I'm going, what? But anyway, I'm sure it's something that we need, so...
Well, yeah, I'm not saying, I just was, wow.
Yeah, but you're right, it's, yeah. Let's vote.
I definitely record a budget in it.
The motion passes seven to zero.
All right, let's roll on to item 20.
Consider approval of resolution 2024-24R adopting the city council strategic plan for fiscal year 2024-2025 and declare an effective date.
Come on, somebody else.
Awaiting a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion for Mr. Scott, seconded by Mr. Gleason.
We don't have a staff presentation on this. We didn't put it on consent agenda just because of how important these are to the council and the communities we go forward, but Mr. Meagle is here if there are any questions.
I was just going to say, we did such a darn good job last year that we didn't need to talk about them much this year, and the minor changes have been duly recorded and presented by Mr. Meagle, and...
Ready to go?
And, and the reason we did such, by we, I mean, we, y'all included, so.
A major overhaul last year, so, it, it, yes.
So we are ready. Ms. Trevino?
And a big thank you to Mr. Meagle for overseeing this and doing a great job with it, as he always does.
Thank you, absolutely.
Thank you.
Ms. Prather? Prather? Thank you. Passes seven to zero.
All right, so we're on to item 21.
The city council will convene an executive session pursuant to the following sections of the Texas Government Code, A, section 551.071, consultation with attorney, and 551.072, deliberation regarding real property to receive legal advice regarding and deliberate possible options for development of city-owned property on South Guadalupe Street. B, section 551.071, consultation with attorney to receive legal advice concerning requirements pertaining to land order petitions for release of land from the city's extraterritorial jurisdiction. C, section 551.071, consultation with attorney to receive legal advice regarding a possible settlement agreement with West East Design Group related to the fire station number six generator. D, section 551.071, consultation with attorney to receive legal advice regarding the state of Texas versus the city of San Marcos filed the District Court of Hayes County, Texas, in cause number 24-0267 pertaining to the city's enforcement of marijuana laws under chapter 54, Article IV of the City Code.
And as always, we have the same posting on our work session agenda at 3 o'clock. We did have our executive session there. We put it here in case we don't finish. I believe we finished everything. We don't need to go back into executive session, so we can roll on to item 22.
Okay. Consider action by motion or provide direction to staff regarding the following executive session items held during the work session and/or regular meeting pursuant to the following section of the Texas Government Code, just as stated above.
All right, and on item A, we provided direction to staff. Item B, we provided direction to staff. On item C, I need to say, I move we approve the limited settlement and release agreement with West East Design Group for the generator issues as... with West East Design Group for the generator issues as discussed with our legal staff in executive session, and I would appreciate a second.
Second.
Ms. Trevino, we will vote.
The motion passes seven to zero.
And for item D, uh, we provided direction to staff, and that leads us to the question and answer session of our program, and I don't believe we had anyone sign up, uh, anyone in the audience with questions or answers? If you do, if you go to the podium so that we can all hear you on, from the microphone, those at home, and for the recording forever, if you would state your name for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Zach Alnator, I live at seventeen oh one Mill Street, San Marcos, Texas. Uh, I just wanted to say, thank you guys for working on the can ban. I've been out there at Rio Vista, Sewell, and Stokes, I've gone out there, done research projects, picking up trash, and by far, the number one thing is plastic water bottle lids and pull tabs from cans, like, by far, absolutely. Um, I do think there is a point that needs to be made, where while this is a serious issue that does face our community and our waterways, it is not such a serious issue that I think it needs to be heavily policed in a way that is negative to our community members. Um, I think, like at Sewell Park, um, they have people walking around with clipboards, there's not, uh, some type of enforcement where it's like, here's a ticket, you brought your dog, yada, yada, just somebody to come and correct your behavior, because I think many of the people there with cans, with bottles, aren't there for any malicious intent, they're not there trying to litter, whatnot. So I really think just like a little, hey, this isn't allowed, these areas, yada, yada, but truly, thank you, guys. This is unbelievably, like, something truly, truly important, our waterways have a lot of litter in them, and it is from these disposable single-use containers, so regardless, thank you, guys, truly.
Would you spell your last name for us, please?
Alnator, A-L, in like Nancy, A-T-O-O-R.
Thank you, and, yes, and if you've watched our previous discussions, you'll know that we take, we're heavy on the education.
Absolutely.
Um, and less on the ticketing, et cetera, that's generally what we do, and we plan to do it here. There will also be a substantial amount of advertising and notification to folks, so they'll, hopefully, they'll know before they get here.
Wonderful, thank you, guys, once again.
And thank you for your participation in river cleanups. Okay, council?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Second.
I have a motion for Mr. Gleason, second for Mr. Scott, and let's vote.
Thank you, colleagues.
Motion passes seven to zero.
And, and we are adjourned at eight oh seven.